Thank you so much for joining us. Let me just make sure we are up on YouTube. We're good there? And Lauren, if you'll make sure in that and see, make sure that can be heard. If you start getting any people that say, "Wait, hold up, stop," they can't hear you. That would be great to know. Well, it's nice to be with you all again tonight and appreciate you joining us for Valparais City Schools' fourth virtual town hall meeting. I hope you enjoyed the Veterans Day video that our high school students made. What a wonderful tribute to three of our veterans. It's available on our Facebook website. Appreciate all the hard work that they did at Mike Church, who helped support the production of that video. And then I hope you were able to enjoy the wonderful Veterans Day drive-through event held at the elementary school where they posted beautiful videos of the children thanking veterans and wonderful drawings. It was one of the finest events I've attended and appreciate all the hard work that Mrs. Keeling and her staff and Chris Burge and the Valparais PTO did to make that an event, such a successful one, and find a way to honor our veterans despite some of our current challenges. Also, I'm sure many of you are aware, but we're pleased that our cross-country team finished 13th overall and that Eli Fullerton placed second. He was the runner-up for the state in that event. So it was a wonderful day for Valparais. We were well represented and congratulate again those gentlemen for the record-setting performance for our school. So, well, when we last spoke about a month ago, things looked a little bit differently than they have looked at least the last couple of weeks here at Valparais City Schools. And so we felt that it was time to have another virtual town hall to let you folks know what we're seeing in our schools, to get a look at what the most recent data is. And then I'll talk a little bit about what some of our thinking processes are as far as how school will continue. And then I'll have just maybe a couple of announcements at the end of our time together and then we'll take questions. So, you know, a large portion of tonight is about listening to you and recording what you have to say on the matter. So if you want to express an opinion on something that we're discussing, we encourage you to please drop it in the comments so that we can have that available for us for reference. And if you have a question, just with like the last three town halls, just drop it in the comments and they'll bring it to us and we'll bring it forward and get you answers. So, all right, so let's take a look at some of our data. So just like last time, I'm going to take you through first a high-level view of what we're seeing at the state level and then I will walk you through narrowing and further until I can get you zip code information, which is exciting. It's the first time we've been able to give that to you. So this graph represents the 21-day trend in Ohio in terms of the number of cases, deaths, hospitalizations, and ICU admissions. And as you can see, just 21 days ago, the state was seeing about 4,000 new cases per day, that spiked about a week ago to 8,000. And this week had been on a decline until today where we saw a little bit of an uptake here to 7,700 cases. So it's certainly an alarming trend to see the number of cases double in the past 21 days as you look across the state. And as you can see from deaths, hospitalizations, and ICU admissions, we are seeing large numbers and the 21-day reported average continues to increase, again looking out at the state level data. So this is the Public Health Advisory System map that was just updated today at 2:00 during Governor Dewine's session. You can see that we do have our first Level 4 of Purple County at Franklin County. And many of you are aware, they've announced at least a citywide, I think it's more of a shutdown there. And you can see that, if you recall last time, many of these counties were orange. They are now red. But we are pleased to, that at least for the moment, Washington County continues to be an orange county. But you can see also that there are no yellow counties in the state, whereas I think when we last met, there were maybe three or four. So what's driving that number? Obviously, you can see the number of new cases per capita. For Washington County, it's a very high 605.90. That indicator has met when just 50 cases per 100K are present. So it's a significant number. And you can see that our new cases is being met, although I am happy to report that there is a decline in the new number of cases in Washington County. And you can see also that emergency room visits, outpatient visits, and hospital admissions were going up, but at least the last couple of days, we are seeing somewhat of a downward trend. And we appear to not have any issues with ICU bed occupancy. So the way that the indicator system works is Washington County will likely go red and/or purple if we start to see issues where our hospitals have more patients than they can attend to, which will, which obviously creates more of a danger in the area. But for now, we continue to be orange, but obviously have an increase for sure. So let's get to some zip code level data. Again, I'm really excited to have this information for you tonight. We've never had zip code level data before. So you can see that this is, since the pandemic began, there's been 878 recorded positive cases in Washington County. About 481 of them, I believe that's a Marietta zip code, but from Valparais, the 45714 zip code, you can see about 127 positive cases. Again, that's from last April until current. If you look and zoom in at what that activity has looked like in the past month, again, we met about a month ago, and I think if you'll recall, I said that there was an alarming increase of cases in Marietta, but that at the time, Valparais wasn't seeing too much of an increase. I cannot report that tonight. We are seeing that there has been an increase in the past month since we last met of about 90 cases in Valparais, the 45714 zip code. And then, as you can see, Marietta has had about 276 during that month. And other parts of the county, more rural parts of the county, have seen an increase. And then if I look in at just the last two weeks, you can see that Valparais had about 65 cases just in the past two weeks of positive cases of the virus. So certainly a much different story than what we knew just a month ago about what the spread of the virus looks like in Valparais City Schools. Or at least, not in Valparais City Schools, excuse me, in the county. We'll get to Valparais City School in just a moment. So just an overview of that. In our total community stats, there's been about 127 total cases, 65 total cases, or about 52% of all of the cases that we've seen in Valparais have occurred in just the past two weeks. However, cases are declining. As I've looked at the zip code indicator system this week, we have seen a steady drop-off of cases. So the cases that were positive two weeks ago are dropping off the books. And at least so far, it does not look like they have been recording new cases in their stead. So it does look like there has been at least a slight decline. Here are our school stats, and many of you are probably aware of these stats as you've gotten my all calls. But we have had seven positive cases of COVID-19 in Valparais City Schools. Three of them have been CDC probable cases, or in addition to those seven, excuse me, there have been three CDC probable cases. And you can see that there have been a number of quarantines associated with each one of those events. So I'll tell you a little bit about what a CDC probable case is. If you are exposed to someone who has tested positive for COVID-19, typically we classify that person as a close contact and they're quarantined. However, if someone who is a close contact of someone who is, if they start to display symptoms, then they become CDC probable cases of COVID-19. So if I was a close contact of someone, I'd go into quarantine. If I start to have a fever, if I start to have muscle aches, if I lose taste or smell, at that point, I'm presumed, even though I don't have a positive case or a positive test, I'm presumed to have the virus. And for our purposes at school, that also means that we presume those folks to be a positive case. And so we start to quarantine folks off of that CDC probable case. So we, that, obviously, when you start to have a CDC probable case, it does make the outreach of quarantine larger because of, just because it's another person that you have to kind of take into account. So as a result of this, we have had some pretty significant staffing issues here. Credit goes out to both of our principals, Lauren Keeling and Sam Pepper, who have done a phenomenal job of finding substitute personnel to fill those slots. Our teaching staff have been wonderful. Many of them are coming, you know, even if they maybe have a hurt arm or fingers, balls, or they come in because they know how important it is to be here. And our food service provider, AVI, stepped in in a big way to get us some substitutes because at one time, we were in dire need of cooks to come in and make sure that we had food prepared for students. So we continue to have some busing issues, so many of you have heard, the all calls that have gone out. Obviously, that's related to quarantines that has impacted our ability to get all of our kids home at one time. But at least for now, we have been able to absorb that in the workday. I'm also just briefly going to show you a little bit of what we're seeing in terms of number of absences. So not students or staff that have COVID-19, but just the number of kids absent. And you see that over the course of the month, we have seen an increase at the high school. And then also, there's been an increase at the elementary school. This week, Wednesday and Thursday, we saw large numbers of students absent, 73 and 121 just today. But my understanding is those include quarantined students as well. And unfortunately, we did have to quarantine a larger number of students this week, one from a kindergarten classroom and one from a bus. So we had larger numbers of quarantines this week than we have had in the past, which at least explains some of the larger number. But we are trying to keep our eyes on the students that are, they're coming to school each and every day. So that's where we stand from a data standpoint here in the county. And I think now it's time to talk a little bit about at least what I'm thinking as superintendent and what I'm hearing from folks and what we're going to do moving forward. So you've probably heard, a number of districts are thinking about going into remote learning after Thanksgiving or until Christmas break. The concern is that, you know, if we go for a break for Thanksgiving holiday, there's a large number of folks that travel about and come back, that you could see an increase in cases. And so many districts have decided that they're going to be more proactive and transition to remote learning and then come back after Christmas. Other districts have decided to continue to operate and move forward. So from my perspective, you know, I'm thinking, you know, those kind of three possibilities. One, we could be more proactive and we could think about getting ahead of a potential spread. Or we could continue to operate. However, if we continue to operate, there are two things that might get us to a point where we wouldn't be able to continue. One would be staffing, obviously, if we had a large number of staff, teachers, or bus drivers where we just couldn't, we just didn't have enough people in place. That might require us to go virtual just because of the number of teachers. And then second, if we started to see more in terms of spread in the building. So we have not seen a lot in terms of spread in the building. The cases that have been contact traced here at Valparais City Schools have mostly been students or staff members that picked it up from the outside and can pretty clearly say, you know, based on contact tracing, that they came from a contact on the outside. We are not seeing a large number of cases where anybody in the building is getting it from somebody else. Not that we've been able to identify. But obviously, the concern is, is the community numbers rise, you know, and more and more time goes on, that you could, you could see that. And that's something I'm thinking about and trying to keep a finger on the pulse of. If that begins to occur, that would be something that could require us to make a change. So those are kind of the options on the table and the considerations that we're thinking about here. And wanted to have a chance tonight to get you the data and the information, to give you an idea of some of the options on the table and then allow you to provide some feedback or questions to us as we consider what to do moving forward. So I guess with that, I'm going to pause and see if we've got any questions or comments. And yeah, all right, what do we have?
So we have two questions at this point. One is related to our school stats. Are they posted on the website anywhere?
Yeah, so every time that we, they're posted two places. So every time there's a positive case of COVID-19, we post a letter on our website under the COVID-19 section. So if you go to the website, there's a menu. You'll click on the menu. And then in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see COVID-19 information. You'll click that and it'll bring it up. It's also on the app. So if you're in the app and you look, in the menu section is the very first line item there, COVID-19, and you can just kind of select right there and see what's going on. At coronavirus.ohio.gov, it also is posting those cases. So it's, you can see what any school district in the state is reporting. Now, those numbers are not updated every day, they're updated every week. But that's another place where you can kind of track what we are seeing in terms of spread. So on our website and then also at coronavirus.ohio.gov.
Okay, we also have another question that is, how would or could someone volunteer to make meals at the school?
Yeah, so I don't know that you could volunteer to make meals at school. We certainly would love to have substitutes that could come in and support us. If you would love, if you would like to have that opportunity, visit us here at the central office and we would just need to get a background check and be able to get you in that way. But yeah, we would definitely welcome that support if folks are willing.
Okay, we have another question that the parent is asking, "What are we doing? I work full-time and would have to make arrangements." And so I guess to round that out, do we know what we're doing yet? And when would families know to be able to make those arrangements?
Yeah, so I think that's part of the discussion that I think we're having here. So on the one hand, you know, trying to balance what we're seeing right now, are we on the downward side? And if we continue to go forward, can we continue to have the staffing that we need? And if so, then we'll be fine. Or some districts have decided to go, they've decided that, no, we're just going to go ahead and get ahead of it and go remote. And so, you know, for some families, it's a trade-off that as a community we need to make. And part of my point of being here tonight is to get feedback from all of you in terms of, you know, as a community, would you rather have, you know, more of an ability to make a plan and to know that this is what we're going to do? Or would you rather we continue to go as long as we can? And if, you know, in terms of staffing or spread, we need to stop, we'll do that. So the pro there is we'll have more days in person and we likely could make it, you know, maybe we could make it all the way through. We don't know what will happen in the future, but we will continue to be able to have that five-day support for kids, which we know our students desperately need. On the other hand, the trade-off is it could be a more abrupt shift between in-person to virtual. And so, you know, I think at the end, I'll talk about this again, but families definitely need to make sure they have, they start very seriously considering, you know, what alternative arrangements they might need to make so that in the event that we do have to go virtual, they have a better idea of what they would need to do.
So if students travel out of state over the weekend or during the holidays, should they quarantine before returning to school?
So we do not have a required quarantine for students that travel outside. If the governor has a website or on the website has indicated states that are more dangerous than others, if they have a 15% positivity case rate in that state, he's recommended it. So my advice would be to families that if you do want to travel to a state like that and you want to quarantine as a family and you come back, that would be, that would be just fine. But we do not have a policy that would require that.
So we have a couple of questions regarding virtual and Virtual Academy. Will you still offer Virtual Academy beginning in January for families who are concerned?
Yeah, yeah, we'll continue to offer, yes. We'll continue to offer Virtual Academy. We will have a survey coming out in December about, more about that, and I'll make some, excuse me, some more details about that when it comes. But yes, absolutely, we will allow folks to transition to virtual and we hope to continue to be able to allow folks that were virtual to transition in-person. But it would all be based on what the required, how big of a demand there is and what class sizes are and how we can, how we can make that work. But that's our intention and our aspiration.
And then also, can you explain again how families can transition their child to virtual learning if they choose to during this time?
Yeah, so again, there's going to be a survey that will come out in December where parents can elect what it is that they want to do moving forward.
And then also, if their child is in school currently, can they transition to virtual now?
Yes, if you are in school, you can transition to virtual now, that is a possibility. You would need to contact your building principal to make those arrangements.
Or the office.
Yeah.
Directly to the secretary.
Yeah, thank you.
So we also have some questions about hybrid scheduling. One, if that's still an option. And two, if we go into a hybrid learning environment, can families have children on the same days?
Yeah, so if we did go hybrid, absolutely, it would be on the same days. And I think they've already taken that into account as they've made hybrid. You know, I've gotten a lot of feedback from other superintendents and districts that have done hybrid. There have been some pros, but there are definitely some cons. And I think from my perspective, one of the triggers that would, that would lead us to go remote would be staffing. And so if I have a staffing issue, whether I'm remote or hybrid, the hybrid doesn't, doesn't solve that problem. So I think it's more likely that you would see a temporary remote learning of maybe one to three weeks, depending upon what's going on at the time, until cases kind of flatten out and we can get back in, than you would see like an indefinite amount of time of hybrids. So our intent would always be if we have to go remote, go remote as short as possible and get back in and get back to business.
Okay, we also have a couple of more questions about the virtual option. So for students in high school, do they have the option to join Blue Sky?
Not right now, no. If you want to join Blue Sky, you'll have to wait and catch up in the semester. So if you're a middle or high school student, you know, my advice would be to continue to go to school. It's going to be hard to go at this point to peak because you would have to basically start from the beginning of the semester. It is your option if you would like to do that, but I definitely would, you know, would ask you to stay with it and continue through so that your child receives the credit for what they've done thus far in the school year.
And then also, if a family is already attending Virtual Academy, will they need to reelect attending Virtual Academy for the second half of the school year?
No, so we would presume, we would, if you could fill out the survey, it would be nice. But we would presume that if you don't fill out the survey, that you intend to stay. But obviously, the flip side is if you want to transition, do make sure that you, you complete the survey and make sure that, you know, you understand that once you make that decision, you know, you need to abide by it. I got a lot of calls, continue to get calls from some families that elected to go virtual wanting to come back in person, and we haven't been able to accommodate that. It's a staffing issue where I, I need to have X number of students and staff in order to get kids what they need. And once we make those decisions, it's, we can't have people coming and going because it would fluctuate too much class sizes. So just know that once you make that decision, that you need to stick by it because it'll carry you through the rest of that semester.
If we do transition to hybrid, will we let families know what their days are?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely, yes, yes. If we do transition, I think most of the elementary families should know that information was posted the first day of school. And I think it's by last name, is that right? Or?
It's a little different at both the high school and the elementary school, but we tried to do by last name at the elementary school and keep family pods together.
Yes, but regardless, we will, if we need to transition, yes, we will communicate that out.
So we have lots of great comments and thoughts and suggestions for plans coming in, and there's a tremendous amount of them, so I'm not, not going to read all of those out loud.
Yeah, that's great.
They're fabulous. So keep them coming and we'll continue to read them as we go and look into what we're doing. But at this point, we've worked through most of our questions from a Facebook perspective.
Okay, all right. So with that then, we've talked about the survey in December. Again, that's very important. And just, I'll continue to say what we've said every virtual town hall. What we have seen in terms of spread is what folks do in their, in their personal time and the decisions that we all make. And, you know, what may seem like a harmless gathering, a week later turns out that somebody unbeknownst had, had the virus and it's... unbeknownst had, had, had the virus and it's made a bad situation. So please make good choices if you, over the holiday weekend, please take the advice the CDC has given, to wear a mask, be socially distant. If you're going to get together with family to try to make it a little bit more limited if possible, so that we can continue to hang through. I mean, the good news is that, you know, our understanding is that vaccines are very promising and hopefully we'll be here, you know, in the wintertime, but there's still some time between now and when there's an ability to get that vaccination out to enough folks to have an impact and we've got to buckle down and keep going, so.
Two really quick questions.
Yes.
If anything, if any changes are made, how will you notify families? So how will we let people know if we change into a different learning environment?
Yeah, so we will do an all call and, yeah, we would do an all call and let you know that way. We would also probably send something at home in writing as well if we were going to make that decision.
And are the stats just the letter on the website or the chart also that was shown in tonight's presentation?
No, so we post, we post a letter with, with the cases on the website. If you want to see a chart, that's available on the coronavirus.ohio.gov website.
And we're good?
Okay, well, thank you very much. Please, please leave your feedback so that we can, we can kind of get a sense of where everybody is and what they're thinking and what they're, what they're feeling. We are committed to maintaining five-day operation, as we've said since the beginning, as long as it's safe. But we look forward to your feedback and we will let everybody know in the near future if we are going to make a change. So if you, if you're watching this later and you didn't have a chance to comment, please send us an email. You can find my email address on the website so that we can get your voice heard and we can understand where you want to be in terms of, you know, how we continue to operate here in the next few weeks, so. Okay, I'm going to sign off then. Thank you very much and have a great night.